Well, good afternoon, everyone. We definitely appreciate the audience today. We were, we were thinking we might have had even a bigger one, but we definitely appreciate everyone that comes out and whether it is to, to address us or just to support us or just to understand city business. Anytime we can have the public involved, it's, it's better for all of us. And, uh, and with that, I grant y'all a, a good evening. And I will call to order the Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty four Prairie Grove City Council meeting, roll call.
Here.
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 All of them are again.
Three grand.
Chris Powell.
Here.
That's them all.
Here.
Before we go to the public comment, I do want to say that under the unfinished business you see on y'all, on your agenda that we, I will bring before you a proposed audance today to just go back to the original one hundred dollar fee. Obviously, I don't have to vote on that, but we figured that that was the easy answer to go back to what we originally did. So I will propose that to y'all today. So that has been added as a line item. With that, I will open it up to public comment. You know, we have two people that want to talk that I know of. Mr. Noll, you want to go first?
Alright, so I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our town and some of the things that are going on about that old Cumberland Presbyterian Church at two hundred West Buchanan Street. And, uh, as you know, that's right in the epicenter of all the construction down there. And, uh, so there's a few things that, uh, I would like to address, and I'd like to give y'all the opportunity to partner with me on preserving the church. Some of y'all probably know the history of the church and some of you may not. And so I'd like to just kind of talk to you about the history of the church, what it means to our town and why I think it's important to preserve the historical accuracy and significance of the church to our town. I believe very, I feel kind of passionately about this. I feel like it's my watch to preserve the church and I've put a lot of money and effort into doing that. There's more to do. So as you know, Andrew Buchanan came to Prairie Grove in eighteen twenty eight and he was called to preach in a revival in the Cumberland Mountains. Those days, there was a USA Presbyterian that pretty much existed. And the USA Presbyterians believed that in order to be an ordained minister, he needed to be, he needed to go get a doctorate degree and do a lot of studying. In this revival, the Cumberland's emerged and they said, hey, if you're called to preach, we'll send you out. We'll cook you the best we can. We need preachers for the frontier. And as the country moved west with manifest destiny, Prairie Grove was basically around here. And so Buchanan's family had already settled Kane Hill and had started the women's college. Andrew Buchanan was the youngest. Andrew never had any kids. A married lady named Sana Neil. It would be four and later, as you may recognize the name Neil, was his stepson and raised him as his own. So Buchanan came here by boat to down the Arkansas River, came up to Kane Hill where his family was and said, hey, I want to do my own thing. And they said, well, you ought to go settle to Spring, seven miles from here. So Buchanan came by ox and cart from Kane Hill to the Spring and Lock Park. There was an old hunter trapper named Tom Waggon that already laid claim to the spring. And Waggon was kind of a wild man. Lots of wild tales about Waggon. But Waggon was a smart gentleman and realized that what Buchanan was doing and being called to preach, he said, I tell you what I'll do. If I can find me another spring suitable to live on, I'll make a trade for this area, the spring and the surrounding area. So Waggon's gone a few days on horseback. And when he came back, he said, I found me another good spring suitable to live on. Here's the trade I'll make. If you'll come to my new residence when I get settled in and preach me two good redemption sermons, I'll make the trade. And so that was the deal for the area of Prairie Grove. Uh, Arkansas wasn't a state yet. It was eighteen twenty eight. And, uh, so the, the handshake deal was made. And that's where it all started at. Buchanan immediately built a temporary log cabin structure at Spring. And then as soon as he got that finished, he went down and built a log cabin where our church, the Cumberland Prairie Chapel on the Prairie sits today on Kate Smith and Buchanan. And in those early deed restrictions and deeds that I found on the church, he gets the land granted to him by the United States Land Bank. Martin Ben Guren signed that document. I have probably that somewhere. And I believe it was a hundred and sixty acres. I believe it was two acres. And, uh, so that was his land. And then in eighteen thirty eight, Arkansas became state thirty six and thirty eight, he deeds the land over to the prairie congregation. Now, that's the first time we hear the word prairie used anywhere in our town. So they called it the Prairie Meeting House. And that piece of property was to be used for three things. It was to be used for preaching the gospel, teaching school, and burying the dead. And it has been used for that all these years. Uh, so then we rock along and, uh, the Battle of Prairie Grove comes along. Heinemann, or Buchanan actually died in fifty seven. The battle's in sixty two. So Buchanan has died. His son, Colonel Neil, or James Neil, has inherited all of this stuff. And at that point, Heinemann, the Confederate general, comes to town. He established his headquarters at the church at eleven o'clock the morning of the sixth. The soldiers at that point were looking for a descriptive term on their battle maps for where they were at, where the headquarters were at. And trees had grown up at the park, maybe even there at the church. And so they referred to it as the Prairie Grove Church after the prairie and grove trees. And so the name of our town comes from that very church. Buchanan, the people that talk about Buchanan or Uncle Bubba's, people referred to me, was one of the greatest, they said, circuit preachers of our whole area. The Buchanan's were very instrumental in the forming of Washington and Benton Counties. John Buchanan, his brother surveyed most of Washington and Benton Counties. And the town of Fayetteville, Arkansas is named after the Buchanan's hometown, Fayetteville, Tennessee. So a lot of history to do with the church. So with that being said, I'll bring you up to current where we're at today. So we're doing work on Kate Smith Street and Buchanan, and I signed a utility easement based on what I thought was going to go on down there, which I thought was we were going to take the ditches, build those in, put sidewalks up, water, sewer, gas lines, all buried. The electric line right now is on the east side of the street next to the hardware store, basically. So when Swepco realized that there was a utility easement now on the other side of the street, they thought that it would be real easy for them to move their line on my side of the street, which I'm all for helping the city any way that I can. However, feel like the historical accuracy of not having power line there is important. For one, it's unsightly for people going to the cemetery, uh, that are reflecting, looking back. The weddings, pictures, funerals, pictures, again, it's just, man, it's hard to have an old historic structure with a three base power line running through. And then on the pole that's going to be right by my driveway, there'll be, um, two or three transformers on it that will run the alleyway back down to the hardware store. Right now, it's on the hardware store side and, uh, I will keep it there. But if they can't do that, then I had proposed, um, that we bury it. So what I am proposing to the city is I'm a licensed general contractor and I would be willing to supply all of the conduits and do the digging for that three base power line to be buried, basically from Buchanan to my driveway. So Swepco gave the city a price to do, to do their part of that, and it's about forty nine thousand dollars for them to do that. The first option would have been to have no poles on my property. But that could have been us thirteen sixty seven thousand dollars probably. So that's what I'm asking for y'all to do is partner with me on preserving the church. There's a couple of things that y'all might want to find interesting. The historical significance of the church is really, really neat. Here's a picture of the church. I don't know when this was taken. But just look at Kate Smith Street there. It's just a path.
And Marcus, this is, and maybe a Chuck answer as well, because it's just moving that one middle pole for fifty thousand dollars, right?
One pole. Eliminate the pole or the pole that's there. Not the one that did drive? No, it'll still be there.
So Chuck, I, I have a chance to drive by and take a, take a look. The pole, the new poles that are there, what is going in addition to what is there now, or is it, is it locked and loaded as it, that's it?
All there is.
Okay.
So I wasn't aware of any electrical going on at all until I saw those poles set. And when I saw those poles set, I'm like, hold on, that's not what I agreed to. Now, I know what I signed, looking back at it now, but
Thank you, Mr. Noll.
Verbally, that wasn't what I thought was happening. When I saw those three poles, when they set those three poles, I'm like, hold on a second here. That's not, not what I thought.
So maybe Mr. Mayor or Chuck, a procedural question. First of all, Marcus, thank you for your preservation of history. You and I have that same, same passion. Since the deed is done, for lack of a better term, the poles are up there and all of that. And I know we have a certain price point for the phase of construction that's going on now. In general terms, there's no difference in the, the price today versus if we made the decision a few weeks later or whatever, when that phase one is done, to see what's left, if anything, or is, is that a rational way of, of thinking since, since it's already all set?
The work is done by subcontractors with Swepco and they'll be wanting to tile that in as a secondary feed for downtown. And so what it does is it gives us a feed from both ends of town. So in case something goes down of Isonics like it did last year in the storm, we'll fill all of downtown. There'll be a secondary feed that comes from the west because of this new poles and new feed they put in that came down Butler, then up, uh, Baggett, and then came down.
So the work that's done now is not live yet?
No, it's not live yet. There's no rush. Just post.
Will it be, will it be live at the end of phase one?
Because I have to remove all the poles in front of the business of downtown. All this is to remove the poles on that street.
And I think part of what Swepco is doing is they had to move lines because of the construction. So they decided this was a good opportunity for Swepco to upgrade. So they're upgrading their lines.
And so I can get a, and I think I already noticed, I think, I think, I mean, Marcus has talked about this a lot because this has, this has nothing to do with you digging like this, this, I mean, excuse me, this includes you digging and that's just them moving that one pole.
No, I'm not just asking the city to do it all. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm in on it too. I, you know, what is wrong with the poles where they're at? Why?
They've moved them as part of the water line realignment. If we're putting a new water line up Kate Smith. And because of the separation between the existing sewer and the new water line has to be a minimum of ten feet or above, they moved the water line closer to the buildings. And then the new storm drain run down the west side of the street. Because there's a lot deeper than the water line that, and they didn't want to, the integrity of the building.
So Chuck, if I, I snapped a quick picture. So if the new poles, the first one on the corner of Kate Smith and Buchanan, and then the next one going towards the cemetery, there looks like there's a single line running through across in, in front of the church right now?
Um, I'm not familiar with what they're changing with this secondary feed. I know they're upgrading everything. And this that he is asking for is only going to eliminate that.
Right.
And with those underground up to the driveway.
Yeah, it does appear there's multiple lines today running from that corner pole. So there's, I count eight or nine lines.
There'll be phone and cable and everybody else still on it too. Because then they're going to have a. So the, so the underground will come across over the pillar, still there, always under Buchanan.
All of that's open now, so they could move it now. Probably with less of us in on that.
This one will be gone. It's that new pole that they set there.
I thought it was that, wasn't it the middle one that we talked about that day?
Yeah, the middle, the middle pole on the, so my driveway would be on the south side of the driveway. That's the one we're getting rid of.
That was my understanding from Swepco. That was the one that would be moved. But I could be wrong, but that's how I understand.
The driveway stays. And from there, they go across the street and pick up that.
So the one at the corner stayed.
So the one closest to the.
You, you can tell me what you thought. That's what I thought it was. I thought it was the middle one.
Yeah, the middle one. Yeah. There's one pole that's going to stay. That's very close to this monument. I mean, it's probably three feet. That's that.
That's the daughter of the Confederacy monument.
That's, yeah. Pose it, let's move it over in front of the show. I mean, you probably, you probably seen it.
You don't mind, sorry. So that's the corner when you're talking about on the parking lot.
Yeah, that one's going to stay next to the monument. So the next one is the number one.
And when we, uh, when we originally met with Swepco, I don't know how we got that number that day, but Swepco was thinking they could do it, uh, between ten to fifteen thousand. And then, and then it came in at forty nine.
Does the forty nine have to be paid upfront or is it not communicated over the thirty five?
I, I would, I would assume it has to be paid upfront.
I don't think Swepco has the city in.
Would y'all like to see it? Would y'all like to see it?
Oh, awesome.
Okay, so this pole is going to come out to the, they're going to set another pole, which they have set right next to this, you see this monument right here, the daughters of the better monuments, which they have stating that it's a war hospital. So they came down to my driveway right here. They set another pole on this side of the driveway, south side of the driveway, and then another one on the north side of the driveway. So we met with Swepco and we said, hey, what could we do to clean this up? So we agreed to take out a pole on the south side of the ground. I mean, leave the one one in. So basically, it'll be a pole right here. And it'll be a pole right here on the south side of the driveway. And there, I mean, on the north side of the driveway, it can be held. There, we'll cross the street and we'll go to the hardware store and we'll keep this out. Just one. Yeah. Because the best view of the church is when you come down downtown Prairie Grove and you get to the corner, face it right there, looking inside of the church. I'm trying to eliminate that power line so that you don't have the view of the power line with the view of the church.
One of the things eliminating this pole would be adding a pole in front of it. So we'll have to put some type of pile under it next in the parking area to sort of park that had a pole there. But yeah.
What sign would it come out?
It's come out of the project. The one that we set aside for this downtown project.
Keep in mind, we're, we're taking, we're stealing without stealing. We're moving money from the street department into the project fund because this project came in so far over budgeted. So we're actually utilizing a lot of street department funds for this project and the mining work extension project. Uh, we're trying to be very, very brutal right now simply because we've got phase two coming up. And even though it's a reimbursement from RDO, it's a reimbursement, meaning we have expended the money before we refer. So we're trying to keep our balances as high as possible until that second phase is completed. Then we'll have to reevaluate where we're at, but, uh, we're on overtime, but, right? I think that's the explanation.
This project came in with a number eight, need to cover.
We got it down to four, down to five point six.
Just phase one, just phase one.
Yeah, it came in way over there.
So, so we ended up tapping in street department funds to pay that difference.
We got a asphalt bidding down here later on. That's, that's going to come out of the street funds.
Are there any grant opportunities?
I don't know that we could get a grant that fast anyway for trying to get something before this would have to be completed.
Three million dollars more to do the strange part phase two.
Yeah, I don't guess waiting on this as an option.
I don't know. We, we may, you may be able to wait till next month, but that may be an assumption. I don't know how fast they move and.
I'm assuming after it's constructed, it costs a lot more to do this than.
It'll be a lot more to mobilize and we'll come back and change it.
Yeah, I can, I can imagine.
Time you spend belly feds and everything else.
Yeah, once the poles are up there, we're going to want to string wire here pretty quick.
Well, it would have been great if somebody could have notified me. You know, I, I've tried this.
Well, well, it doesn't always tell us what they're going to do.
I know, and I'm sure they don't.
Four trees in tree park last year because, and they didn't tell us. We just found out that they were having up and rolling on the ground. They were all true shaped trees.
Not any utility can go into the seasman, can't it?
Inseasman or anybody.
Marcus, I know this may be a, even a silly or a moot question, but have you had any conversations with Swepco, uh, on this and what was sort of their response?
We met with Swepco, uh, Mayor Fox and Chuck. We met down at the church. And I've kind of laid out the same thing that I laid out to y'all. It's like, just told Swepco, hey, this is the most historical thing in the governor town, maybe more historical than the Battle of the Parky. You know, so there's so much history here for our town. And I tried to, you know, just talk to the guy from Swepco and get him to buy into that. And he's a super nice guy, very, very nice. Uh, he just said, yeah, love to bury that power line, but it'd be a cost, you know? And, uh, when his numbers came in, they were quite a, you know, double what he basically said he thought it would be. I don't know what that was due to. Maybe the fact that he doesn't want to move his poles, start shooting the ground, you know? You know, I tried to say, hey, you know, this church was here before you were here. You know, the church was lit with oil lamps, which are in the attic of the church, which I got down the other day. You know, and so that's where I'm going. I'm trying to preserve the history of that because I think our society is a mess and it's going to hell in a hickory pit. And I would like to think that at some point in the future, that church might play a part in somebody saying, hey, what did our forefathers believe and why did they believe? And the church is a physical representation of those folks, of, you know, Mr. Buchanan who believed in something.
So Marcus, just, just to be, let you know where I'm, I'm struggling as a council person in sort of two fold is one, the history side, but then the, the cost of asking the taxpayer to pony up fifty thousand dollars to move that, that's, I just wanted to be transparent with you is that's, that's the struggle is I, I wholeheartedly wish the lines were not there. But you know, the cost of that.
I'm the same way, you know, if money was no object, I'd just pay for it right on.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that's what I'm, what I personally struggling with.
But in the whole scheme of things, in the span of history, fifty thousand dollars is nothing. You know, we spent fifty thousand dollars on a worn out pickup truck. You know, so the city would overcome that in a short amount of time, I'm sure. I'm sure that there are a lot of other costs going on right now, but what other downtown section do you see or historic building do you see with power lines? We don't. Any town that has any railroad ball, buries their power lines. So, well, I'm, you know, I've, I've got skin in the game. I've put a lot of work into that church and a lot of money into that church. It needs a paint job right now, so I'm fixing to put some more into. But, uh, I, I want, and I think for your, I think y'all value history because of, you know, the park and, but there's other things that are historically significant and the church is one of them. And so if there's anything that should be safeguarded in our town, I think it's that church. Really do. So I appreciate y'all's consideration.
So what is the timeframe when it has to be a decision?
That, that's the thing. I don't know that we truly know. You, you would assume that it would be, yeah, it would be tonight. Do we have another thirty days? Possibly. They, they not, they're not supposed to finish this to mid June, July, somewhere around that. So, but I mean, you just don't know.
I bet you we did too.
Ms. Parker, will we set a precedent for every worthwhile organization, church?
Well, we may not really talk about precedent, but I think from legal point of view, there's some concern about using taxpayer money sold for the benefit of private industry. I don't know that it would be legal. For using, dedicate city money to it. I mean, I think. I only know legally to extend city money, those are my, my concern.
Do you feel Mr. Mayor or Chuck, they're talking to the power companies? There's no room for negotiation at this point, this, this point?
The, the thing that throws me about the power company is that the numbers are so far different from what they told us to where the bid came in. If Mr. Parker's right, it doesn't matter if it's ten thousand or fifty thousand, if we can't spend the money, we can't, but I think ten thousand gets at least Marcus a lot closer. But we were somewhere in that ten to fifteen thousand when we were standing in front of them. And then all of a sudden, the bid's at fifty thousand dollars, but.
And he did say when he was on site that this work is done by a third party. They have a subcontractor just doing all the exploitation. And the removal of the pole that's not Swepco's agreement. So he may have reached out to go through, see what the chain link was caused and see what it's going to take to do this underground work instead of overhead. And this was the difference.
So it may, I'm not trying to prescribe a solution, but, you know, making sure Swepco understands that there may be some legal concerns with council taking action from a monetary perspective, and then also the council not knowing if there is a time restriction in which that decision needs to be made, that may be enough to go back to Swepco.
Marcus, I, I'd gladly meet with you and Swepco again and see if they're, they're willing to come back to the table. It's, it's better than just saying, we can't help you. So I mean, we'll, we'll definitely throw out that tea leaf again and see, see if they'll come back to the table.
Pole the loose issue or is it all transformed?
It's the lines and the transformers.
I wonder if they've got any options, maybe moving transformers up across the street.
Yeah, asking, they asking them what they would advise may even help in that, that discussion.
You, you have the connection, sir. Can you call them and then you just tell me when and I'll reach you there?
Prairie Grove.
Thank you, sir.
So thank y'all for hearing me.
I, I'd like to bring in to the council, um, ATVs, city operation in the city, um, in the nuisance, they agree. The voice office of the, they've already confiscated ATVs being operated in the high school because, of course, they're not, they're supposed to be operated on city streets. But it's not just that. Um, we have some derelict, um, kids who are parented by derelicts themselves that don't care what people have to tolerate as far as noise. I unfortunately am ambushed at my work, my place of business, which is Melton, and at my home with kids that ride them on the streets. They know I don't like it. And I've spoke to the mayor about it and I've spoken to Chris about it, um, the chief. And the, the thing that they do, they, they, at this point, do it to be nuisance on purpose. They drive by my cameras. And it's not just me. Now they go down Douglas Street the other direction. They ride around Angus on their dirt bikes. They ride across. And these are also fifteen and sixteen year old kids who barely have experience to drive a car. And they're driving these dirt bikes that have no turn signals and they're four wheelers. And they are the loudest, the most annoying four wheelers you've ever heard. the most annoying four wheelers you've ever heard. And now across in, in the, uh what, across the way from my house, they sit them in their truck, in the back of the truck and turn them on and rev them as loud as they can. Sometimes at ten o'clock, nine, knowing that by the time I can call the police or anyone else can, because that's not just me, it's my neighborhood. They have to deal with it. I have several kids in my neighborhood that are seven years old that are taught to walk across the street and look both ways, but it's hard to watch across the street when you have a sixteen year old kid coming so fast on a dirt bike that they get hit before they ever got safely across. And I'm proposing, if there's any possibility on, I know that the ordinance says that it's not allowed on the streets, but even in across the, they're just pegging across from one yard to another, there's still that chance of danger. But also I have camera footage of them intentionally coming out in front of a car and stopping the car. The car has to come to a complete stop and they look at them and smile and think it's funny. And, and I'm wondering if there's any way at all to make it to where as a city that, that people can come safely around corners without having to worry about that, but also is it, I mean, how many people really need to ride dirt bikes and ATVs in right in the middle of town? I mean, that's what, that's why I own the land on the outside of towns for, or if uh me and, me and the mayor discussed. If you own three acres and land and city runs, then maybe you could reasonably ride a four wheeler safely and never have to and come of, come upon, you know, traffic, children riding their bicycles, all that. So I was wondering if we could probably potentially discuss that. And it's also, I know I, I don't, our north ordinance covers from eight AM to, to eight AM to nine PM. Um, I don't know how wide that opens allows them to make a nuisance noise to intentionally bother their neighbors. Uh, whether it be, and, and again, at my, at my diner, uh that's a common cut through place for people right now, especially during construction. They are spending four wheeler, four tracks and throw and grab them on cars. My neighbor to the, to the behind me that owns Benchmark, his wife almost got clipped by the car or by the four wheeler. Um, they've, they've dealt with, there, there are people who enter into their vehicle, like the trailers and stuff, not being able to do it and having to wait on these four wheels. And they don't have any sensitivity to the fact that it's operating a business. And I, I too, I'm moderating the business and a lot of my customers come out that back. And they have to lock up their rigs because there's a four wheeler at four o'clock in the hour, you know, or whatever it be, sometimes it's at two o'clock. With the summer coming, they're not in school, so they can kind of do it whenever they want. So I wondered if we can discuss that and if there's any kind of room to change the ordinances to allow for maybe it, I, it's absolutely understandable to start your four wheeler and load it on your trailer when you're going to ride your four wheeler. It's different to do what I'm, what I just discussed. And if I go over again, I'm just going over the same thing again and again, but. I wonder if we can discuss it and maybe discuss options to change that, make it more toward these young kids who don't care much about the law, um. Will take it more seriously and their parents will take it more seriously, allowing them to do it. Thank you, sir.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Brian?
Yeah, we lose all. The noise or would that be?
And they both, and in, in all fairness to, to both parties in this one, they have been cited, the police department have had the opportunity to, to do the job. The vehicles have been impounded, but eventually you get them out of impound and then like any, anyone who breaks the law, then they have to be caught again. And so I, I think what Brandon's accent and, and Brandon, you can clarify it is, is there anything in between that can be done? And, and honestly, I don't know. O'Brien, you may even have something to say here. It's, it's, you catch someone, but then they do it again and you have to catch them to stop them from doing it again, to catch them to stop them from doing it again. And it's the in-between and we don't really have an answer for the in-between. If they, if they rev up their, they rev up their four wheel, oh, they making noise. But the, the police aren't there to catch them or if they run from one side of the street to the other side of the street, now it's illegal, they weren't supposed to be on the street. But if the cops didn't catch them, then, then what do you do?
Mr. Mayor, can you educate me? What is it like to get a, a vehicle like that out of and is it just pay the?
Yes, it's, it's just like getting a vehicle impound, so I, I'm, I'm going to guess a hundred bucks, something to that extent.
A thousand change the life.
Yeah, but I mean, that's really on the, the tow yard. So scouting sets those things. One, if, if you own the tow company, when you pick up a vehicle and then impound it, uh it may be two fifty. And so, but whatever your impound fee is what they would have to pay to get out. And then there's a citation that comes with it. And then that's dictated by basically the judge on, on how much they paid out or even, even the prosecuting on whether or not there's a plea bargain in there, but I mean, there, there are fines accrued in there.
It's regulated like what the toll fee. It's set by.
It's a, it's, it's definitely a difficult one that you, that you're requesting. It's not an easy answer. Um, I think, I, well, and I think that's a. I think that's a conversation to have with Chief and, and O'Brien on when that line is crossed and how the police can work with you on a regular day to day on this is what's going on.
And it's just not me. I'm, I'm, I'm eager to voice my opinion on, on it because I've dealt with it for so long. But there are other people down around Angus that I know that they, they heard the noise and they didn't like it either.
Yeah.
They may have not called yet, but you know, if you hear it once or twice a week, but again, I hear it coming back all the time.
Yeah.
And they seem to be very clever about smelling out a cop car when it comes. I don't know. We talked about, I'm like, I wonder if they had a police radio, but like Chris said, there's no way with your guys' new system that they're actually getting them. But they just must be, hey, you watch while I go play, you know?
Well, I mean, I would say that, uh number one, just like we would say to anyone, thank you for coming and, and just speaking to us because it allows us to kind of see what's going on in the city. But I think you need to stay in real good communication with chief and with, with captain. And as much as it may be an annoyance to call every time, like that's just the truth. You just have to call every time. If it's, if it's eleven o'clock at night and they rev in that engine, you need to, you need to.
Don't call the chief.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
He is administrator. I think some of the phone calls have gone to chief.
I only called him once.
So I'm not trying, I'm just saying I recommend always call our.
Just to call the toll.
Call him to be the fastest thing to get there. If you have video, submit that to us. We can start an investigation and we can operate off video and file charges from video.
And my reason for calling because I, I suspected that they had ra- radio and I thought, well, if they're listening, you know, if I called the police department in Angus. Yeah, and he told, he, he implied me about that and I didn't know that. That's why I called him and.
We, we'll talk after this and we can, we can work out a plan.
Thank you again, sir. And we'll move to the approval of minutes for the April fifteenth regular meeting and the May sixth special meeting of the council. Do you have a motion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. The treasurer's report was sent out by email. Any questions or comments? Here and none, we'll move it to audit. Um, talk and discussion, I actually want to just table it again in, in many facets. Why, I do want to ask you one thing about it because we have been hitting the non-operational vehicles pretty hard. We probably sent out, I don't know, twenty plus, um. Correctional letters over the last two or three weeks. What we found out is that there's no distinction between businesses and residents. And so the complaint comes back of why you're telling me to move my vehicle, but let's just use back porch and red rooster because they are the two that came up and said, but they can have a broken down vehicle as advertisement. And so what I would like y'all to very just quickly say is, um, I can either pursue the businesses, just like we pursue the residences, because that's what the city ordinance says, that no one can have it. Or would y'all like us to bring something to y'all next month? That would propose that a business could have, could use an antique vehicle as an advertisement. Do y'all have a saying on that or you all just want me to bring it before y'all next month?
What about the, like the repair yards and stuff like?
So the repair yards can have them.
Okay, okay. Some of them have them sitting there for a long time. I hear they're trying to collect payment.
Yes, yeah.
Any work in this right now applies to car automotive facilities and uh record yard.
Mr. Mayor, the, the ordinances that I've read, you know, it delineates between residential property and commercial property. I think it makes sense based upon what I understand the complaints that you have received.
Yes, sir.
Is residential, I would suggest that we consider starting with the residential exclusively because that fixes the, the purpose of the discussion. I think the others are very good discussion.
And that's all we've done so far. So we haven't, I didn't even think about a business until some of the people that we went after residential went. Well, hold on, what about them? And, and so honestly, I was wrong, but I went, they commercial, I'm, I'm pretty sure that they protected. But then when I went back to check it, obviously I was, I was wrong. Okay, I'll, I'll bring something next month for y'all to look at in that one. I just wanted to know if y'all was interested in me even entertaining that. Um, the food truck discussion, I've tried to send y'all everything as far as what we, actually it was Mr. Falk who did a lot of the research on it. Mr. Mr. Oldridge as well. It looked like that hundred fifty to a hundred dollars was kind of everything except for Salem Springs, which was three hundred. So we're four hundred. What I'd like to propose to y'all, and we had um Stephen just, excuse me, Mr. Polka, just bring up our, uh. I want, I want to say current, the previous, which was just the one hundred. It's not in front of you guys, but what, what I would, what I would ask y'all to do is entertain going back to the original city ordinance, which was just a hundred dollars. Now we can keep on talking about it, but it seems like we, we constantly go back to that hundred dollar. And so we just made a carbon copy of what it used to be. And we'll just call it the ordinance for, for tonight, if y'all are proposing.
Back to what the fees used to be.
Yes, the fees.
Remember we changed the stuff about being specific about the distance from the doors of restaurants. We did, we did a lot of that. February?
Yes, sir.
I think was, uh, the only thing we went back to was.
Just a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollar fee, that's good for you here. And I've been in several cities in our area that don't even, because they require they have a business license.
Twelve is the, is the permit good for twelve pound?
I just said it was for a annual fee. So I think you can, you could, you could set it up however you want it. You know, if you get a permit August fifth, it's good until August fourth.
Is it, that's one of my next questions, how confusing is that? Not very many of, anyone, another favorable, there's like a business like, they consider the business license.
Yeah, they actually set up.
Yeah, but yeah, and they kind of made it like they would, like it would come in like the brick and mortar businesses and pick up.
These were sporadic, it's not unusual.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not unusual of getting somebody to come in maybe for a Christmas event. And you know, they only have one month if they did that.
And Larry, are they, so in addition to the food truck fee, they would be, this is a question. They would be required to have a business license also?
Not current, not current. If they, if they fill the requirements of this, they.
This kind of acts like a business.
So yeah, it's a business license for food trucks.
And favorable word of theirs that way. It was a business license, you get a food truck and you paid the fee, which I thought was pretty. That's my only concern was not to create more fatigue in city halls than that. Alright, that's, I'm filing this in.
Yeah, we'll have to have a motion.
We'll pay it back for the hundred.
I drafted it in the Senate.
Yes.
This afternoon.
I think the only thing we changed was the fee.
By drafting it, he changed one number or something.
We'll spend the rules placed the orders on first, we're going to tie it low.
So I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to refuse myself since one of my properties has a food truck on it.
Yes, yes, sir. Any, any further? Roll call?
Recall.
Refuse.
Rick Clayton.
Yes.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars.
Yes.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Ordinance to amend the state's food card requirements.
We've already spent the rule, we've said that they're reading the doctor's.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Roll call.
Recall.
Refuse.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars, yes. Chris Powell, Dustin.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
This let, this will lead to a run on the normal clock, won't it? To go in place or if there were any emergency clauses or something. Be kind of tricky to them. First thing I know, they're already starting to get food trucks. This is kind of the time to set up down there sometime.
It'd be two months from now if we don't emergency close it, but I mean, most of the people's already filed for it.
Okay, they're already getting their stuff.
Most of the people, because, because originally, I mean, we didn't change the four hundred into, because you had that same two month window, so a lot of people.
My kidding is the gin, street dance is coming up and I can get a lot of food vendors for it. I can think of a couple that were there last year. Probably going to have to renew this.
The partner question, but I don't know if we could or not. Because then they're going to be on the same property, local partner, but we allow them on there, but charging them too.
So you can charge them if you didn't.
Yeah.
It's going to be charged.
That's something new we add, but it's in the ordinance, on the books.
Hey, you know, the council thing, it's a, it's a, there's, there is a, there are reasons to say it's an emergency and we want not put a financial burden on food truck vendors coming in for street dance.
They have to fall before the sixteenth, so. Fourth of July, fall, sixteenth, that's right.
We don't think.
So listen up and type in.
Is that what it is, all in favor?
Yeah, move to uh next emergency clause on this, second.
Well, do have an emotion in a second from emergency clause. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Emergency clause passes. Uh, moving on to new business, we have a city ordinance amending the animal ordinance and it, and it really is just a re-adopt of what it was previously. This was something that was left out. Am I correct on that, Mr. Oldridge?
Very far, he just, he just, he mounted. But yeah, it was just twenty eighteen animal ordinance we did, there were like three, three different sections we amended. Two of them got caught by it and this one didn't.
So we're not asking y'all to change anything. We're just asking y'all to keep what we've been doing and just make it official. We have a motion in a second. Any further? Roll call?
Recall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yes.
Sue Pluck, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars.
Yes.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
You want me to read it, sir? An ordinance to amend the animal control ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance to amend the animal control.
We've already spent the rules, we've said, they're reading the doctor's.
We have a motion second. Any further? Roll call?
Recall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Pluck, Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula DeMars.
Yes.
Chris Powell, Dustin.
Yes.
Um, item B, an ordinance approving final plot of phase two wagon springs and I'll turn it over to the storage.
Uh, wagon spring for South Lock Street. This is the second phase. Uh, phase two was submitted to the city of the planned unit development originally. Um. The original planned unit development, y'all, we discussed this before when we did preliminary, but, but the original had an alley in the back, a three loan parking. And the developer came to us and wanted to have the city consider not requiring that alley or amending the alley that they had in there for cost reasons. And a negotiation took place between the planning commission and the developer. And what they did is they substituted a brighter front setback, so instead of the usual twenty five foot setback, it's a thirty five foot setback on the front of these lots. So they're currently small lots, but with big front yards and of course the impact of us, as we've been discussing parking issues for a long time. This looks essentially allow four cars to stack in the driveway as opposed to. So I think from a city standpoint, it was a fair trade and a good trade. And I think it's going to help keep a lot of cars off the streets, so I think it's a I think it's good for the city. And as far as everything else, all the parks, all the laws that are posted, I think Chuck is satisfied with the work that's been implemented. I think it's good for the city. And as far as everything else, all the parks, all the laws that were posted, I think Chuck is satisfied with the work that's been implemented.
And I think it looks good. We got more than two pieces of paper that's been submitted this week, but it was something to put it off.
Street look really good.
And this still has that gravel, fire lane, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, it was engineered to handle the the weight of a truck.
If anybody has any questions, just do have representative shooter here tonight.
There's been a role play.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Recall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Clark, yes. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula Dipmars, yes. Chris Powell.
Yes.
Does some.
Yes.
We're next to approve file of wagon spring.
We first been the rules way second, third reading, not four.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Recall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula Dipmars.
Yes.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Item C, resolution regarding social media accounts. This is one that me and Mr. Park, we can answer any questions y'all have. Um, in essence, what we have looked at over the last two months is. Myself and Mr. Oldridge started, um. Bringing in representatives to talk to us about basically how not to get sued. And there's a lot of lawsuits that pertain to if anything ever gets deleted on a social media account. And now it becomes really awkward because if if the city puts something on a social media account. And citizen Marcus Knoll. Addresses that social media post. And after Marcus. Addresses it, it forms a thread and Brandon Vancicle decides to put something on that and Marcus doesn't like. And Marcus deletes his original comment because he didn't like what Brandon said on his comment. We're the owner of the account, which means we're responsible for it. And if Brandon wants his post back, then he can sue us through FOIA. And so basically what? The starting fee for us would have been about ten thousand dollars, a three percent yearly increase. And then depending on your population in a thread, obviously costs will continue to accrue. Yes, they're just, yeah, they just, they they keeping everything. So when Brandon. If if Marcus was to, or even if the mayor was to delete it, which the mayor shouldn't be deleting anything, but if if anyone was to ever delete anything. What we worry about is the fact that we can't control whether or not Marcus ever deletes his comment, which would delete Brandon's comment. But since we can't control that, that's why they all cotton. That way, if you ever, if you ever request it, the city can provide it. So we have to start deciding, was it worth us paying for that money? Or do we look at our social media accounts as being information only? So that's what we started doing. We found a way, and if you've been noticing, most of us, so probably ninety percent of the posts that we've been making now. Has been information off that. Thank you, Mrs. Sue Clark. Uh, she's the one that showed us how to do it. And so, um. But long story short, so we've been just turning comments off. Information only. If Rick Alt was, Rick Alt, the citizen, was to share. The a city post, once he shares it, all the comments you want on yours. If you don't like the mayor, you want to cuss me out. You can do that on your page, not necessarily the city page. So we just post out informational stuff. It can be shared. On our page, you can like it. Or you can message us and then the message is just so we can communicate. I don't, I don't understand what you mean. The swimming pool opens, when does it open? And then we can message that back and forth. But it's not out there in social media land where we have to worry about deletions. And so part of the policy is to turn us to information only. And the other part of it is, is when we started looking at it, we had a lot of people with access to our social media sites. So we're dropping that down to a department head, a representative and potentially a third. So you could only, you can maximize where you could have three people potentially on a single website will identify who those people are. So that way we know who have access. Outside of that, it's not much. What y'all have to consider is that we're going to an informational only site. Versus comments being approved.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I think it's a brilliant thing to do and something that's that's needed. I read through it and I thought it was was real well written. Um, Mister Attorney, there's one question that I had that I'm glad it addressed is if a. City employee is making a comment on his or her personal Facebook page about. Uh, the city or about something at that point. Where I struggle is our mandate. To have sort of that pretext of, you know, this is, this is not the city, this is me personally and all that. Can we tell a person? To pretext on their social media, something like that?
That's what got me involved with the recent US Supreme Court case. Town didn't have Facebook page. The Chuck in that town. Was, there's no one in the city now with his personal page. And somebody in town had it out and was just throwing him and he. Got their comments out, you know, putting their comments on his personal page.
Right.
He got sued and taken to the US Supreme Court. Well, really, he's. Looks like he's kind of acting on behalf of the city. So this is for the protection of those individual employees. Because one of the things they said you look at is, is that person authorized? Posted on behalf of the city.
Which is why we want to compress it.
Yeah.
Who's authorized. Because those people are. At risk if they start deleting the comments on. But if they get out there, this is, this is mine, this is not the city's. They're protected.
Yes, it's for for their. Not necessarily for cities.
And even mine, because I used to do a whole lot on my personal page. That was all city. But now, if it's a city thing, I I post it on the city's page and then I share it on mine. So I'm not originating any post. That belonged that really is a city.
Struggling is mandating that somebody off of the clock, you know, do something there. And then the secondary question would be, when you do. When you look at the restrictions of who can post to social media, consider. Uh, hourly versus salary, because anybody posting. On, you know, about the city that's hourly, they would need to be actually paid. Uh, a certain amount of time, Larry, I'm not sure if it's fifteen minutes or what that might be. So just a consideration of commenting legitimately as the city is working for the city and they would be paid for that.
Yeah, and I I don't know any instance that that's ever happened. Typically, if we do post after a, because of emergencies or something, someone will call me and say, you know, we're gonna want to like.
Right.
But again, salaries.
Right, yeah. So I I think salary would be fine. It would be hourly.
Normally, any post that happens like that, it's because of urgency.
Right.
And and just your, your information, I drafted the minimums distributed to the employee per it says. This is the reason we're asking you to, this is for your protection. Try and protect you from lawsuits.
Mister Mayor, you remember what court case that was?
What? It was a chief of police, wasn't it?
There's another case, there's another case. This was the US Supreme Court case.
Second, big words.
Yes, sir, it's a resolution.
I move, I move.
Do you have a motion and second? All in favor to say aye. Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. We also has a a resolution to approve and update an MOU with the Virgo School District. Um, I sent this out probably about a week ago. Truthfully, the only big change is that we went from telling the school. Hey, an SRO should work at this game or should work at that game. And myself, Captain O'Brien and John Evans, who's the department, excuse me, the director of security. Kind of sat down and broke down how many hours that should be if a single SRO was to work at the games in which they needed. Came up to a hundred and thirty seven, we ran it up to a hundred and forty. And so that's basically the the big change that you'll see in front of you. And that way it gives the school. The the idea of going, hey, I don't, you know, a JV football game that has a hundred people at, I'd rather have them at a band concert. And then the superintendent and director of security can elect to use that, um, over here. Rather than what we dictated them to do. And, um. And so, I mean, that that is pretty much, there was one other thing. Let me think how how it went. But that was pretty much it as for in a nutshell, that we wasn't telling them. When to actually do their breakdown and we were granting them a hundred and forty hours of comp time. That's what I wanted to say, that. In the policy, it just dictates that it'll be comp time used throughout the school year. But outside of that, it's pretty much the same amount you all approved last year. I do have a motion and a second. All in favor to say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. A resolution for contract for baseball season concessions. And this comes from our auditors that we just needed something in place. With, uh. With our subcontractor, who's Mrs. Angie Gill. As far as a contract concerning how she handles or how she's paid. Yes, Angie, I'm sorry, she got remarried. Mrs. Kelly, do you want to add anything to this one?
Mister Mayor, a little bit of ignorance on this one is that contract for this. Does it reference any like liability from a food safety if there's an issue of of. Food prep or any of that or you could cover any of that like?
There's an indemnification law that says. She will indemnify the city.
Okay, the word.
The biggest problem is compensating her and we were sharing the profits on the concession stand with her. Control over everything. And that essentially made her an employee in the city.
Right.
And she wasn't actually an employee of the city. So she shouldn't have been handling money in that sort of thing on behalf of the city. So now she's actually her own contractor working in there. And then we're just charging her.
But as far as like Department of Health and all of that, does she have to be licensed herself or does that come through us?
She she has, the city gets a permit for the concession stand, they do an inspection, they issue a permit.
Yeah.
She has to meet all, she's required to meet all that. It's very limited, you know, like food preparation.
Right, right.
Yeah, they they do an inspection on us every year and they.
That's what I was looking, thank you. No move, second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor to say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion, please. Do we get free popcorn? You 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 taking away from our profits. Uh, we have a resolution to approve a bid for street improvements.
It's gonna be an overlay for all of our lives that's gone last year on the outside. And then also the stretch of, uh, certain weeks. Then becoming very periodated. We had advertised state line, we got one bid. And, uh, it came in at one ninety seven.
Yes, sir.
Been by the time and I think we had suicide.
It jumped out how quickly would they be allowed to do it.
He said he found these people to mobilize and said they need to complete some of their bigger projects. We just need approval, so thank you for the spending. I can have another day.
One ninety seven, four sixty, if you want to.
Yeah, motion, motion to approve, thanks.
We have a motion and second. All in favor to say aye. Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. And a resolution approving funding for the Friends of the Pound is originated. In twenty twenty two through Mister Hudson. And, uh, we cannot find a resolution on it. So we believe that it was passed it. Uh, excuse me, that it was passed and they should be a resolution, but since we don't have one, we're asking y'all. To provide us with a resolution so that we can.
It should have been in the minute. We didn't, we didn't pass the resolutions back. It should have been.
And and it is part of the budget that you approved.
Fifteen thousand.
Is this an audit question? Was this an audit question? So this is more or less.
Yeah, and and Larry, it says it's in the budget. So motion, motion to approve.
I do have a motion and second. All in favor to say aye. All same sign. Resolution passes. Moving on to reports of committee sanitation, Sue Clark.
Everything's going real well. We have visited with the. We're just trying to get as much insight. Like don't you can go down that path. So, uh, being the mayor, that was a couple of. Doesn't matter if things going well, um, temporary order, I think, put in place where they can see the expansion. And so that is.
Street Department, Rick Clayton.
For chair.
Uh, you can see downtown is pretty tore up. And, uh, so we are, uh, hoping that phase one, that's all the schedule for the middle of June. I'm sure it's gonna be backed up. Some of the other work is the weather that's been going on. We're hoping to just keep it moving forward. We had a pretty extensive meeting with the contractors and the engineers last week, going there. And, uh, things like that have got a little bit of attention and a couple of. Flying group got their base cut down. So, uh, they're looking to take to work on the inlet boxes and the drainage. And I think they're scheduled for trying to finish the sidewalks and the seam straw for the end of next month.
We heard the name of phase two or not yet.
Just to update y'all on downtown, one quick thing that that. Myself, Mr. Oldridge and Chuck's talking about those, the sidewalk cuts don't look good right now. And so we're trying to figure out a way, even if we have to come in and do some work. Because right now you couldn't even walk down our sidewalks if you had to. We gotta get those barrels out the way. And so. We we started game planning today, so hopefully we'll have an answer within the next. Day or two and, uh, and some improvements, whether it's through them or through us, but we have to improve our sidewalks.
Original contract showed. And we're putting coal patch in there just to make it more substantial surface, surface. But each one of those surfaces have dug up again, once they energize. Then they can tie in each one of the buildings that we go back with carpet solution, back some concrete.
That coal bags easy to get, right?
Yeah. So, uh, we've had some issues with somebody saying, what's sticky? You know, sticking my feet in a tractor store, a little bit of flour, maybe powder dusting on top of it.
What, oh, sorry. Sorry, I promised a constituent and full disclosure, I have a property on the street I'm about to talk about, but, uh, Roger Street, Larry, I don't know if that's. Yeah, where where our little cottage is at. Uh, one of the, one of the neighbors had asked that I. Bring to the council's attention, so just general rose. Rope, uh, status of of Roger Street there, if we have a, the longer plan of, uh, recycling.
You talking about the block that's not paid?
Yes, no, 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 I'm talking about the the block where they, you know, Arger, Arger's old house is at.
You got it, Chuck? Thank you, sir. Water and sewer, Doug Stumble.
It's often much grass out there if you're still waiting on, uh, some other things, uh, the big mixture is sold. We had some variated mixers, we were having mixers that had went out on top of the original trains. And so we use the new ones to install on that because we haven't brought the new train up yet. Uh, once everything is. Uh, they promised we'd update before today. I didn't get one, so hopefully we'll figure something out. About revised timeline to finish up and start bringing down trains one and two and cleaning them. Skate system, so pretty soon we'll wait for one more control pad on it. Just being built elsewhere and then shipped here. Once we do that, we'll have capability of our lift stations to city back to one central place.
Paul, record.
Uh, just really quick, uh, total collections for the month of April was forty seven thousand, three twenty three. Uh, percent or total for the city was twenty eight thousand and five dollars. Just for context, that's compared to twenty six thousand last month, so a couple thousand dollars maybe.
Thank you, sir. Paulson Breakfast, Paul. Oh, I'm sorry. Fire Department, record.
Uh, I'll defer to J C.
Uh, I'll defer to Jay C. Uh, hopefully you guys will report a picture today. So uh, year to date, I'm. Compared with last year today. Having some discussions with the. Fire truck may actually have thought we lost. How the home book and it's still a ride that I agree. And work on, made it any better. I. Some of the guys like this. Same.
But new, the newer one? I knew we had trouble with the other one too.
Yeah, well, this is the same, same one.
Okay, I thought the other newer one had a ton of tires, but this is the same.
Well, they've changed the tires and this is the same truck.
Same truck, okay, okay.
They changed tires, changed wheels. They, they made it a little bit better, but it's not, still not worth the vote.
Thank you sir, Pox and Rec, Chris Paul.
Let's get him, some questions, uh, Mr. Judge, how's it all coming along?
The food is ready to go, we uh, had all our inspectors, we took help from last week. I want to give uh, thanks to all the maintenance personnel that worked on it. The health department inspectors said it's a joy to come to our facility because someone said, well, we maintain, so we're ready. For business when they come to look at it.
Awesome, so that's next weekend, this, this Saturday.
Actually, they're doing a spectacle event Friday night?
Friday night for uh, seeing the past owners and. Don't hope anybody wants to buy us. Also, they're gonna help us for a couple of days. So that's ready to go.
Um, I had one thing, did we get the uh, I know I have a very new mayor out about the chain of the uh. Swing.
Yes, it is unlocked, uh, when the mayor contacted me last week, I went over there and videoed it.
Next Sunday we're just going to leave.
Yeah, we'll leave it off, it's recommended to leave it on there, but who's going to be available on Saturday or Sunday to go over and lock it for somebody.
I, I was just kind of sad and I get pictures of her in a wheelchair behind the camera, so sorry.
I love that they can help figure out how you said. It, it, my comments recommend, just recommend to keep it secure and locked at all times. When not in use, so I don't know what good it's for, for the public.
Yeah.
And of course, we've had a lot of feedback negative and otherwise it's out of baseball. Team completely macked up because of the rain, uh. Sometimes they make a call at noon not to play the ballgame. Because at that point in time, they can't get out there with the equipment. Drag them and then with sun and the wind all afternoon by five o'clock at night. Probably would have been able to play on it, but at five or six o'clock at night, we don't have anybody to direct the fields. And so then it takes two hours to get the fields ready, we start at five o'clock and nobody plays one game until seven thirty.
Right.
And so uh, coordinator at the time, he would choose to cancel the game. And so uh, and one thing we did Friday is I sent six people over there to work on the fields this past Friday. And they started about ten thirty in the morning, they had everything ready to go at two o'clock, two thirty it started raining, it rained for an hour. Watched the whole thing out, so it was a little bit good. But six people at twenty two dollars an hour for four hours. And then it's just for not, so.
I mean, that's the thing, but you know.
Playing it my ear with the weather.
I, I mean, I get these calls, like I know mayor told you that, and I don't know much about baseball, I really don't. So I'm like, I don't know, I mean, can you not play them on? I guess so, but uh. But, so you know, when they called me about these, so I, I was like, I don't know, I'll have to make a call, I don't know what to tell you, you know? And so, you know, I got told, you know, the people calling me like, I know, you know, they might cancel you because of the rain, I, I get that. But it's hard to uncancel again, it's canceled. Because once you cancel, they are making other plans, you know, they're not waiting around for another phone call, they know, never mind. And so, you know, I understand the parents, they be doing that, but. It's not a long, it's small.
That's why I waited until like two o'clock in the afternoon before I let them make the call.
Right.
And because we were trying to do what we can.
I just, I just want to know if there's some kind of. I. Wait, we can just see the lighting.
I reached out to a company and I could get some stuff to assist with the fields and dry. In the middle of the bed, eight hundred dollars a pallet and we need three pallets, and one for each field, and so now you're looking at another three thousand dollars.
We're not like calling, we don't have it. Right, yeah. Now, if they want a fundraiser, I think they're fun.
It's price, so it's price, it's harvest, last year we priced harvest. We did, we priced harvest, we put it on it last, last year, can't put the car on with two people. So it takes about six or eight men to do it. And so if you put them on at the end of the night and then you have to have six or eight pallets here, because we don't have the expansion. And then that's why you're getting put back on. And you know, well, as I do, when you turn the lights off, everybody runs out.
Yeah.
They're ready to go home because they've been there for an hour and a half or two hours and they want to get there, you can start it as well, so.
Okay.
We can even get them to turn the lights off, let alone.
Right. Well, I guess, you know, I, so I'm, I'm just kind of like, I need to educate myself more baseball again, when you can't.
Last year, we didn't have the rain, we had this year and it was very slow.
Right.
This year we're having.
I've had one game, saying, six weeks in, we had one game.
Yes.
I'm like.
But when I looked at some of the other towns, they're scheduled.
I did look at all of the season schedules today and I only saw one team that played one game, most of them played three or four.
Okay.
But they are having a meeting this week with the Northwest Baseball Commission. And they're going to start playing on Wednesday night to get some makeup games done. They're going to do some Saturdays and then they're going to ask to extend the season one week, which means both playoffs back. An extra week, but they'll have time to get something.
Well, I'm actually going to start going to some baseball games, uh, I got that he's playing, so I'm going to go down there and actually put myself down there and. Get a nap, I guess.
And Mr. Powell, it was good for us to hear it as well, but when the league's talking about doing it as a whole. When the league's talking about doing that, it means that the problem's not just centrally located to Prairie Grove. Now, we have our own issues, but it also meant that everyone was dealing with rain and delays and makeups and. You know, you, you move a makeup here, but it rains again and I can't get the fields ready, so uh, the whole league is dealing with the same issues.
And then uh, another thing briefly, uh, just to talk about some of the stuff that we talked about in our uh. Group with the Park and Rec Committee. I opened it up statewide, it is imported concrete for the new pickleball courts, because I only received one bid. Uh, from a local contractor and they came in at, uh, what'd they, around forty eight thousand dollars.
And that's just for just.
That, that's concrete, that's. No net, no lights, no fences, no, nothing else.
What's the rest of it, you think? I mean, it's all key to one fourth pad, no rest is done?
Uh, probably another twenty five thousand on top of that. And so I did an advertisement statewide, the same time that I did the advertisement for the asphalt. I got one bid from a company out of Oklahoma and it came in about eight thousand dollars for it. So it came in at fifty six, just for the concrete thing. That's what, that's during the dirt work and after semi, buried it out.
So we're, we're estimating about sixty five thousand for quarters.
Minimum, yeah.
And we got a sixty thousand dollar line budget for us, for improvements on Pox and Rec. That's why we haven't had any movements on Pox and Rec, because we can't even get anything within our budget.
And almost like you just stay up until we can get something done, right? And we have been brainstorming and looking at maybe. A little bit of property outside of the city. You know, within a mile or so of our city limits. We think maybe that'd be an option, we're going to have a school complex or additional field. Where it's just outside the city, and so we're, we're going to start pursuing things like that, see if there's options out there. Because there's some families that are prominent here in the city that have helped us with things in the past. That have a lot of property outside the city.
I like another you find out what that's.
We'll keep you on the loop. Before we move on from Pox and Rec, y'all do have one other thing in front of y'all and so um. Mr. Stumble asked us in our special meeting about trying to change up the wording of our in lieu of fees. We kind of struggled going back and forth on how to change it, but what you see in our red letter in there is what we. Propose as a change and then we do have to change language in a different section as well. But do, do any of y'all have any questions in how that reads? It basically just allows it to flip where the council can make the, the determination to allow the developer to donate. The minimum of the one acre per twenty acres at the five hundred dollars per lot. But it puts that at the forefront, so the money becomes before the, the dedication, which is opposite of what we do. But, but outside of that, it's not much changing.
It's a fee first, it's a lot.
So we're, we're with the main person.
Yes, and we'll, we'll propose that to y'all next month, but we just want to, y'all, if y'all come up with anything, just message. Mr. Oldridge on if y'all think something's changed, but that's, that's the language we came up with and we believe it, it works out pretty well.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, let's put Chuck on the Pox and Rec, uh, thank you for taking care of the, the tree in Martin Park. I know that it's, um, it was, it was sad to see because it was an old tree, but it's, it's dated, it's dated come, so I appreciate you guys taking care of it.
We had somebody come in there and they examined it, essentially it couldn't be saved. And it was uh, to be honest, fifteen hundred dollars to save it, nineteen hundred dollars to remove.
Yeah.
And driving stuff and, you know, that tree has looked like that, in the same condition since Paula was a little girl.
I knew it was good when I talked to the manager, and they were good, that they were sad that it went away.
But understood.
Professional major for majors, does it specify like how much it can be done, like the strips of, and outside, like what's the name?
The language we change basically says it's going to be up to the planning permission, city council, the theme of the property is appropriate or needed. So if the council looks at a couple of little strips and says, hey, there's nothing we can do with that, you can say no. And it, basically it makes the fee come first and then, but if they did have a piece of property, let's say the city needed a park in a area. You had a developer that was building a subdivision there, you might negotiate with that, uh, developer to say, you know, you give us five acres here, we can take that in lieu of the. And if it was something we needed, it makes sense. What we've been experiencing post subdivision is they do try to give you detention ponds and utility easements, things like that. At a slight point, and usually we have to say no because we can't use it, so.
Anything further than Pox and Rec?
Yeah, let's go back here. Where are we at on um, what are your names? Of the uh, the rock.
Rockstone?
Yeah.
She hasn't ever picked up with the design.
So I have my grandfather, I'm like, keep seeing it going on.
They both contacted me with the design and then our guy.
I'll, I'll, I'll. Okay.
Soon as we get together and lay it out, you know, once we get past the water park opening, it'll kind of take the pressure off the street guys.
But the boss and her quarters are ready.
She needs to show me a couple of stuff.
I'll send her a message.
See if I did that work here. Because there had to be.
Right.
I don't trust my.
Police Department, Doug Stumble. Where is that?
Well, since the beginning of April, we logged nine hundred twenty nine calls, police department three hundred and two of those traffic stops. We've issued two hundred and four citations, two hundred and seventy six warnings. And thus the past thirty days have generated seventy new incident reports of that, four of them were DWIs, four were drug cases, one sexual assault, one child abuse report. And the multiple theft, uh, use cases. And then I wanted to mention specialized enforcement, because some of y'all have gotten complaints as campus members about speeding within the subdivision, so our patrol sergeant until the last month. But the finding often, we are speeding enforcement throughout various subdivisions, areas of high complaints, including Prairie Meadows, Sundown subdivision, Little Blount area. Uh, and, and of that, we're just hoping that this kind of helps her communicating the, you know, on contract complaints we got. Finally, our officer control, or animal control officer, Alan Johnson, got in spirit tonight. Uh, he stayed pretty busy, in April he had eighty two calls and then currently in the month of May, he's at sixty eight calls as of Sunday night. Uh, he has also been working with the city hall on various residential ordinance issues. Uh, so so far this past month, we've reported four residential ordinance violations and issued six citations to homeowners. Uh, violations of things like fire cleanup, uh, uncut grass and then the unlawful vehicles that are on residential property.
And we will, we will meet here Thursday at two o'clock for, for bid opening for the police department expansion, so. Fingers crossed that we stay on the budget on that one. So we'll, hopefully we'll have some good news come out Thursday, so Long Beach Plan and Brice not here. Mr. Oldridge, would you like to update?
Actually, you've already, yeah. And way in spreading, so we also have a large scale development, uh, for phase two of the southern storage facility, which is the white. Great storage facility of the chemical plant in, in Prairie Grove. Uh, they're building an addition onto the back of the property, they, they are an additional, don't quote me on this, but something around twenty acres back there. And they're adding additional facilities, some different types of facilities back there with a separate access off of the. Urban space for us. Uh, in addition to that, we have two variance requests, one from Marcus Taylor on Jenkins Road, it's just a situation where him and his neighbor. Uh, were moving a property line, need a lot line adjustment, uh, but it moved the property line too close to an existing storage shed, so they granted variance to accommodate that. And then we had a variance for a gravel driveway down on Giles Road. Uh, anytime they exceed a hundred foot, the planning permission can ground a variance. In this case, it was an isolated house, couldn't even see it from the road. Um, it was connected to a gravel driveway on the neighbor's property already, so it just makes sense if he continued driveway, they created that variance, so.
Quick question, what are, think on that, where the Presbyterian churches? There's that new white houses, but we know one that got burned down by lightning. It has an asphalt driveway.
It's allowed.
It's allowed? I just went, we don't, I was like, what is that?
I'll get it out there first.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all concrete, the asphalt driveway.
It's all concrete.
Okay.
Pressuring him to get the driveway paved.
Right, it was gravel.
And I thought I was going to have to call him back again, then I went, oh.
Yeah.
Senior citizens, Paula Dipmoss.
To lunch today and he said they're getting really close to being finished on project up there. And asking if they were still keeping a lot of people, people coming up there attending and he said they had twenty six for lunch today, so that's pretty good. I didn't mean those. And that's about all I know.
Thank you ma'am. Library Tony Cunningham.
Uh, libraries think about the school year and transitioning over to their summer programs and. I'm not familiar with a lot of employees from all the different departments within the city, but. The one that I do have a lot of contact with is library, both. Megan and Amanda, I just want to compliment uh, two very good employees, I feel, for the city. Of course, you know better than I do.
They did a great job, but the Larry.
Yeah. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you sir.
Tomorrow I will send them a link to this video so that they can.
But for announcements, uh, just wanted to remind everyone that June seventh and eighth is junk ranch, so obviously things will get really busy. We'll, we'll need to remind construction downtown to try to prep and prepare prior to that weekend. We talked a little bit about the street dance earlier, that'll actually be June eighth, that Saturday. And it'll be very similar or the same as it was last time, where we'll close off from um. The other side of Hobbs, but in essence from Hobbs to, to Cleveland now. Any other announcements?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on the street dance, we are going to have, as we did last year, a evening farmer market in Martin Park.
Chamber has a ribbon cutting Wednesday. Supposed to be a name, but they maybe have pushed it back to one thirty, because it's supposed to rain.
I didn't get an email on it, who's it for?
I, Paul, between Prairie Grove and Barnes.
Oh, that's the, yeah, yeah, I'm enjoying.
No way.
Oh.
They're going to start right from two five.
Is it this Wednesday?
Yeah.
There are a lot of those little building there.
And what time you say it was, you thinking?
I got a text today. I don't know. Because they never really completely decided what time.
When I, when I get it, I'll send it to y'all.
I will, I'll pin them down, Sam and Karen were talking about it today.
Mr. Mayor, seeing nothing else on your agenda, I move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.